Okay, alright, we'll go ahead and get started with the city council study session for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. We have one item on the agenda and it's a discussion regarding regulations for mobile food trucks as it relates to Oklahoma House Bill 1076. And we have Beth here from the legal department to have that discussion with us.
Hello, everyone. I'm City Councilor of Wachita. Now, we haven't met yet. My name's Beth Mukala. I'm an Assistant City Attorney here, and I work on licensing provisions, zoning, public works matters a lot. So you'll see me for those things. What I have today is just what is said in the agenda. These are updates in response to state legislation that's effective November 1st. The biggest one is Oklahoma House Bill 1076, which was actually in the title for today. There's at least one more that kind of indirectly touches on this that I'll get to at the end. But this is the State Department of Health Regulations. The bill added new provisions, had am mendatory measures in it. And essentially now, the result of this is that municipalities will be only issuing licenses to mobile food vendors in recognition of state licenses already granted, which essentially means we need to verify that they are complying with the state requirements before they're operating in our municipal boundaries. We cannot deviate too far from the state laws. It's pretty clear about that, that whatever we do has to be in compliance with this act. Nonetheless, I find that their provisions are generally in line with what we're doing anyway. So there really weren't a lot of changes that needed to be made. But if you see the red line version that was passed out, it looks like a lot of red, but it's mostly additions to make sure that we're complying. Then next thing is that food establishment licenses have been defined. We'll get more into the definitions later, but that kind of feeds into the whole framework of what we're doing here today. And of course, there's general rules on just operations that address safety, nuisance, trash, making sure that they're good neighbors. Three aspects that were specifically addressed in the state law that I wanted you to be aware of is where they're allowed to operate. On municipal property, it's what we say they can do. And then on private commercial property, they must have permission. However, as you'll see later, we're not really allowed to tell them in what manner they have to get that permission. They're just responsible to make sure they're not trespassing. And then on residential properties, there are limits to how long they can locate. And of course, they must be there with permission of residential property owner.
Sorry, not to like just get into the weeds all of a sudden. We go back on slide real quick.
Sure.
It was the private commercial, okay, where food establishments are allowed by zoning. Does that mean that basically a restaurant has to be allowed by zoning at that location currently? Like you couldn't see a food truck at a gas station, per se?
Yes. And so if they're going to be, yes, that's what it means.
Okay.
They need permission when they're in commercial districts of the private property owner. Yes.
But they don't have to necessarily be zoned? Again, just the example of a food truck in a gas station. Gas station isn't zoned for a restaurant. It's zoned for commercial.
Yes.
Just trying to, it seems like some gray area.
Right. We actually don't have any zoning provisions that touch food trucks.
Right.
We only really have regulations in our current licensure that reaches fixed food vendors.
Right.
Fixed food vendors have to be specifically zoned as, you know, a restaurant or what have you. But because we don't have any zoning provisions that would say they can't locate here, they are going to be allowed.
Okay.
In a gas station.
Okay.
In a, right.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
I get it. I get your question.
It was kind of a roundabout way. Thank you.
And then on that note, I know we're going through a zoning and subrigs update. Is that something that could be worked on in that so we can identify spots where that is the best use for that area, or highest and best whatever?
And to Councilmember Grant's point, I've seen language in different parts of the country that kind of define the operation of, and you'll see, mobile food vendors, they'll pull up in an industrial park at break time, and several businesses will all come out and grab stuff off the truck. And there are like time limits. You can be in this neighborhood parked on the street doing this business for X minutes per stop. And you may see them in construction sites and that kind of thing. So there are examples of those kind of regulations, less on where they operate, more on how they operate, so they can provide those services in your not typical commercial zone.
Yeah, I guess to the point about residential, like I totally can see people doing neighborhood events where they invite a food truck to come set up. Is that something they were, I feel like they were already doing that before, and something that wouldn't be that much of a change for us now?
It required no change to our ordinance to recognize that food trucks, food trucks can set up in residential areas. The only mention we had of zoning in our licensure was simply with respect to fixed.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember?
On residential property, are we saying residential areas like a food truck could pull up at a HOA pool pavilion, or not something that I would do necessarily, maybe Councilmember Dixon would do, but invite a food truck to come park in his driveway?
Theoretically, that is how the state law is written. And our licensure hasn't had anything addressing that particular issue yet.
And then one question I have is, for municipal property, I know we allow food trucks to come to the parks and events. Do we have any provision that would allow if a existing, this is a real life example, there is an existing taco truck on Campus Corner who is on a private property, has a lease with the private property owner. That private property owner is not going to renew their lease at the end of this year. And they would really like to stay on Campus Corner, because they're also the only place that's open at late night on Campus Corner. They're very busy. And I've thought of the city's lot, because the guy, the owner, has asked me about it. The city's lot on Asp. Is there a provision we've had, we have where a, the city would be able to lease a non-temporary, I mean, anything temporary in the long scheme, but like, a year-long lease of a food truck if we wanted to lease out some of that space?
On sidewalk.
Or on Gray Street, or wherever. So, wondering how, what if we've even, I can't recall if we've gone down that road, really for a, not like a temporary event that's happening that night, but for a year-long type of situation?
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. A couple of things. First, I know we have adopted business plans for those parking lots, so we want to make sure that we're ready to take that on in compliance with whatever plan we have in place for the use of that. But the second part of that is, we don't have anything currently in our licensure that addresses that issue. And it is something I believe this law leaves us room to determine. Like right now, what we're showing is what brings it into compliance, but there are some...
As allowed by the municipality on municipal property, but we may not specifically allow a long-term lease yet?
Right. What it says is, "A municipality may develop a mobile food vendor metered parking pass for a fee that permits a mobile food vendor to operate from metered parking spaces for longer than the vendor would otherwise be permitted."
Yes.
And Gray would both be.
And Flowbird, I'm sure we could program that into Flowbird, and maybe there's a rate specifically for that use.
So that is one of the very specifically enumerated powers.
My first sort of, my first food truck sort of experience was in Oxford, England. Oxford, down where the university is located, the issue is there are no fast food restaurants. Everything closes at 6:30. So there were spots on the street carved out with food trucks that would park one here, one here, and one here in certain distances. And my understanding was, those food truck vendors would lease those spots. My understanding is that leases were very lucrative. And if you wanted food after hours, literally, if you were a student, the only place for you to go if you didn't have something in your dorm was to one of these food trucks. So that is possible. I suspect, I guess it would depend upon how you went about sort of bidding them, so to speak. You pick up those locations. The difficulty for us is, from a food truck perspective, they want to go to places where they're going to make money. And there's so much available here. It's probably not as lucrative as it might be someplace else. I mean, my experience in the dorm is, we order pizza. And it's delivered to us. You're not, I mean, maybe if there was some really popular food truck that got a spot over by somewhere on campus, that...
That's the example I'm talking about, is an existing one that, in a parking lot that's privately owned, and they've been told by that property owner that they're not going to renew their lease, and they would very much like to stay on Campus Corner because they are the only place that's open late night on Campus Corner. They are very busy. And so my only thought was, well, we only own one piece of property down here, and it's that parking lot, so I don't know.
I think that commercial aspect of it is not something unusual.
CPTC may be a great place for that conversation.
I was gonna say, all of the metered lots on Campus Corner are city parking.
Well, this private parking lot has become metered by the owner. They have people that, they have signs they put up, there's an app, and they do have someone in a yellow vest that goes around and puts what looks like a ticket on people's cars. And I've had to tell people that it's not an actual ticket. They can't ticket you, but they can tell you, because it's a private lot. So if they put that on your car, it's a warning that you need to pay this app, or they're going to tell you. But this is not a municipal court citation for parking violation. But it's confusing, I would say, to people. Most people don't know that it's paid parking. It never has been before, and now it is, but it's an app, and it's private and not the city.
So now it's easier to...
It's an interesting situation that's going on over there.
Outside of that lot, it's all public parking that is metered. So they could apply to be on the street if they wanted to be.
Potentially, yeah.
We don't currently have that in place, but, and as you'll see, this law is mostly what municipalities may not do, but the shortlist of may-do does include...
We could allow that.
Yes, I believe so. So here is the definition of mobile food establishment. And just like it looks, food and beverages, movable vehicle, approved by the Department of Transportation. And it has the limits of staying in one place for no more than 12 hours at a time. Our language was extremely similar, so I simply tweaked it to make it identical. And then we're avoiding any issue of conflict. And then they may not stay at one physical address more than 14 days when on a private property with permission. That's state law. We don't have anything specific to enforce, but technically, they would be violating state law if they did not do that. Here are other definitions. Push cart, just like it sounds, it's, you know, manually pushed. Retail food simply means prepackaged. There's slightly different health code reasons for that. Mobile food vendor is the term that you'll see in our licensing ordinance in order to follow the state law and stay consistent with it, and includes all of these three other things we just talked about. And then, of course, food vending vehicle is going to refer to all those things as well. Those are also new definitions that were found in an amended provision of this bill. Okay, so here's the may list. We can restrict certain levels of noise within 23 feet. We can restrict parking operations or require a special permit. They cannot inhibit ingress or egress. This is a basic safety thing. We're allowed to pass provisions consistent with this act that otherwise address public health and safety. So our police power is still intact there. We can develop parking permits. We can investigate foodborne illness or report violations to the state. So all of these things to help us, help the state enforce this act essentially. Here's the may not. The first is obvious. When they're licensed by the state, and they've shown us that they're licensed by the state, we need to let them operate as long as they're also providing compliance with our provisions that aren't inconsistent with the state law. And then there's this list that's pretty much identical for the State Health Department and for municipalities, which says, this is what this act says you cannot do. As I mentioned before, they need to have permission of a property owner, but we can't tell them what that permission looks like. We can't require them to have a particular kind of contract or agreement. We cannot require them to stay in constant motion. That's obviously unsafe anyway. We don't require that. We allow them to make a stop to make its sale and then to move on, unless, of course, they have made arrangements with the private property owner. What we've talked about with getting a longer use of a metered parking, that could be another alternative there. We cannot limit the number of licenses issued. We can't require security measures such as fingerprinting. We can't ask for additional surety obligations or bonds unless they are operating on municipal property or at a municipal event. And I have added language in here to make it very clear that they need to provide us additional insured, insurance when that happens. And then we can't require multiple health inspections or anything special unless we are investigating foodborne illness.
Councilmember Grant?
I was gonna say, can private property owners ask about insurance if they're doing their own events?
That would be a property right, yes. They would. This doesn't specifically prohibit a private property owner from what it may put in its agreement, allowing someone to play. So I believe they would.
Okay, thank you.
So here is the other bill that passed that, it's not State Health Department. This is specific to the state fire marshal, but it's related. Food trucks, mobile food vendors, mobile food preparation vehicles, we're talking about food trucks here with all of it. But essentially, effective November 1st, which is also the effective date of the Health Department regulation, these vehicles are subject pretty much exclusively to state fire marshal compliance for those safety measures. They will be solely responsible for annual inspection of the vehicles. And so part of our amendments to our licensure is to make it clear that what they are providing us for a vehicle instead of an inspection would be proof that they've gotten state fire marshal inspection approval within the last year. And we can still enforce our permits as they're set up. We really didn't have to change much. We just need to make sure that our code is staying consistent with the law. And finally, there is some preemptive language in this particular bill that says, no one. And especially municipalities can enact or enforce any fire safety, fire or life safety code regulation ordinance that is more than what they've already done, essentially. Unless we are within a county with a population of more than 400,000 at the last federal census. And Cleveland County is just above three at the last one. So this essentially only allows Tulsa and Oklahoma counties to pass different codes.
So it's arbitrary.
We haven't had to change much. What we had was mostly in line. There's a lot of wording changes and some additions. We have extended our licensure categories to those definitions that are now found in the Health Department, just so there's consistently there. We have the additional insured provisions. We also have new park food vendor permits. You'll see that it's added in here in red. We just left it in a redline format, because some had commented before that that made it easier for you to see. But essentially, when they're in a park for an event that we're not already sponsoring, we want to have a heads-up for that, so that they can come back and show us their additional insured coverage. And our park food vendor permit allows us to monitor that better and sets up a process. It includes a nominal fee for that, just essentially to cover what legwork we felt was necessary. The other change that we have in the structure of our food establishment license is that we now have temporary annual permits for both the fixed and the mobile categories. Before, mobile food vendors were only temporary permits, either one day, 30 day, or 180 days with varying fees. So now that, to comply with the state law, we've created an annual permit to match that state process. We had to suggest some adjustments to the fees. House Bill 1076 says specifically that we cannot charge a licensure fee that does more than cover the admin costs. I mean, you've dealt with licensure fees, so you know this, we're always monitoring. But we had this anomaly where the temporary fee was actually higher than the annual fee. And that was probably because of the difference of when they were passed and the different, and you know, mobile only being temporary. But in order to have facial consistency, what I've suggested in this draft is that we lower the temporary fee. But as I understand it, there will be discussion coming up with counsel on all of the licensure fees. So this is really a placeholder measure, just so that we can demonstrate facial compliance with not charging more for one than the other, and making it clear that it's only covering admin cost. But honestly, it's probably time to discuss raising the $50 fee if it's been in place as long as I think it has anyway. So all of these might be monitored. At the last page of your redline copy, you'll see the fees set out. The annual is 50, and the one day is suggested at 20, which it already is. The 30 day at 30, the 180 day at 40. Now, we have a placeholder in here for renewals, because as you'll see in our code, there are references to renewals. Having discussed now what that process is, we've confirmed that the renewal process is really all the same amount of work for the office as the initial intake. So what we need to change, that $10 there, and I didn't get it done in this draft, I'm sorry. But what it will essentially say is, a renewal will be the same as the original fee. And of course, annual is always that way. And then you can see park food vendor is now on the list with the nominal $10 fee.
Councilmember?
What are the cost suggestions or the fee suggestions, like from 50 to 100, or 50 to 75?
Right now, it's just the numbers you see in there, except for the renewal fee should be the same as the original permit. The 30 day was previously 50, and the 180 day was previously 250, which is a significant amount above the annual fee, which seemed to cover essentially the same thing. And that indicates to me, all of them probably need some adjustment, but as a placeholder to ensure that we're complying with that administrative cost-only requirement, this is what we should do until you have that more global discussion about all of them.
Okay.
But it's a discussion we can continue to have here, too, if you want to.
What is the state charging for their permits?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that information, but I can.
Yeah. Let's see, on that, I don't know what all it would take administratively for us to keep track of all that, but, I mean, if people are, if a business being, having to pay a permit to the state, and if it, depending on what it is, and to the city, I mean, if we can do, if we can just recruit whatever it costs for us to do it, you know, that'd be okay, but...
It does not sound like too userless a task on our part, verifying we've already been licensed by the state, so our responsibility is like reduced.
Multiple layers of government to, for permission to be business.
The cost of this could come back in a BACA or finance committee, when you talk about...
Yes.
Yes. And my understanding is that that all licensure fees are really on the table for future discussion. And they should definitely be a part of that. And you'll remember, now we have annual mobile and fixed. So that $50 annual fee has always applied to fixed restaurant locations, which, considering that, you know, some inspections will be moving to state entities, it could be that we really are incurring more administrative costs on those annual fixed licensure requests. So it could be that. You'll discuss maybe splitting that annual into fixed versus mobile, and just however you want to handle it. But I think there's a lot of room for you to have those discussions, for sure.
And what, I mean, get into it more in committee, I suppose, but like, what is fixed? Is that if someone's there for more than a year, are they, are they temporary still? And if I own a brick and mortar business and I'm paying the fixed rate, and then this temporary business is paying a less amount, even though they're, they've been there more than a year? So, yeah, that's some stuff we might get into, I suppose.
And I know on the fixed things, the fire department does annual inspections or biannual inspections on all of our commercial buildings, just to make sure they understand what it looks like on the inside, if they have to go in there in the dark or when it's full of smoke. Definitely a different scenario than what you'd face if we had an emergency at a mobile vendor. So they may not be equal, but it's definitely for cause.
Yeah. Well, so this is the timeline. If we get the ordinance on your September meetings, then it will have more than the 30 days to become effective on the same date as the state law on November 1st. So that would be the plan. In the meantime, you know, we run our licensure through City View now. We have some forms that would probably require us planning some updates now that, one example is, now that mobile food vendors must be inspected by the state fire marshal, we need to make sure our form demonstrates us confirming that compliance and not implying that we've done an inspection. We need to make sure that it's clear they're responsible for that. So little changes that we'll be discussing with staff. But other than a future discussion of fees, this is how we intended to take it forward for now, essentially for the compliance. But if you wanted to have more discussion about the parking idea, that's something we could do as well. And I will find out the fees for the state, have that information.
Yeah, I would definitely love to look into potentially letting a food truck rent a public parking spot metered or not. I just think it would be nice to have some options in the area. And being in the downtown area, people do get sick, I hate to say it, but like the things that are openly, and we have visiting bands and artists that are up late, who would love options. So, yeah.
I just see a couple of things in this new direction that could make Norman a little bit more appealing to food trucks. If we are going to do like a parking lot or something with Flowbird or something along those lines, and we have noise ordinance that we need to be prepared of. If you get four or five food trucks with generators, that gets pretty loud no matter where you put it. So if we were able to put in power in dedicated areas that they could run off of, and not necessarily waste, just power to keep them from having to run off the generators, that may be something with permitting or something, you know, some mechanism there that makes it a little bit more enticing for them to come to Norman.
Yeah. The one on Campus Corner, that parking lot is a square, and the food truck is in the corner where it's striped off where there's no parking spaces. And I think it overlaps into one parking space. But prior to the food truck there, like motorcycles would park there sometimes and stuff. But it was in the corner where you couldn't park a car. So it was really, I always just thought it was kind of a wasted space, because it was, couldn't do anything with it. And so our Gray Street parking lot has four corners, two of which have the stripe on them. Our Asp Street parking lot has that same thing. So those corners of square or rectangle parking lots that can't be used for spots, that could be an opportunity to get some, and the guy that owns that place is like, I pay my rent on time every month in full, and, you know. So if we've got people that might be willing to, if we could generate more revenue off our parking lots than just the parking.
Future restaurant incubator of corner that we can't use for parking spots.
So I'd like for us to definitely find, I don't know if we need to hold this up, to come in compliance with state law to do that, but having a more in-depth discussion about food trucks and the ability to use public city-owned parking lots for leasing out those potentially. I'm, yeah, interested in exploring that further, too, and then talking about the fees and everything as well.
But in addition to power, just having some water hookups out there, just make it as easy as possible.
Yes.
And kind of not quite RVs, in a sort of...
Right. I'll just say I have no connection to that taco truck. I just work across the street. I've observed how busy they are, and he knows who I am, and he's, he was like, hey, I'm not gonna be able to ruin my lease, so what am I gonna do? And I'd like to stay here, so... So, Councilmember Grant?
I was thinking about entertainment... Uh, I was thinking about entertainment overlay districts and food trucks, noise, all that stuff. Uh, I guess this is a question for PW whenever we do get into the weeds. But, uh, power versus generator, like, were we doing gray? We're gonna, I don't think you have to do a whole bunch to do two-way main, but, um, kind of curious what the inventory is on potential places where people could plug in. And also is it the infrastructure that is actually compatible with what a food truck needs to run?
Yeah, is it one-ten or two-twenty? I don't know, but we will find out. Um, with, with council consensus, we would advance the ordinance amendments for first reading consideration and that just puts our fire department in a comfortable place, knowing they are now compliant and they know what they are responsible for and what we are no longer responsible for. And then, yeah, we'll pick off the other elements one at a time and, and, uh, there are opportunities before us.
I'd say can, uh, you could fit on either CPTC or BACA. We can talk about that tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Committee chairs are meeting tomorrow morning to talk about retrieve and everything, but, uh, yeah, so we can. Okay. Any other comments or from anybody? Any further direction from staff that you need or?
I think I have good direction. I will, I will ask one question. We're talking about the parking lots. Did you want us to look into metered parking spaces on the street?
Yes.
Especially parallel ones.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seemed to include, would make sense to include that since we allow for the street to reese. Even though we haven't seen much interest in doing the streetery thing, but. Um, I haven't seen yet if the new steak and oyster restaurant is going to keep that out front.
Well, we were gonna camp out front just to ensure it.
East Fire was, so. But, uh, yeah, I would say that's, we should definitely include that in the discussion. Any, yeah, any publicly owned parking, uh, space that we're not using for anything else. The empty lot across the street that we don't have anything on.
Okay. I wanted to be sure because I see this as distinct conversation because of the street and sidewalk adjacent-ness with the parking space versus the parking lot, which is almost like a lease situation.
Yeah, I see the parking lot being used to do just a street parking space, but I think we can talk about both of them.
I, I actually see more viability with parallel on-street spaces.
Oh, yeah.
Because if you think, if you get four or five of these in a row, create kind of a food truck alley almost. It's harder to do in a parking lot, but really easy to do, yeah. Thinking Santa Fe. You know, right there, you know, next to scratch this.
Every, every major city with a big park or something, you just, I mean, sure food trucks are lined up for, yeah.
If it wasn't, uh, if it wouldn't block the whole front of the deli, I think the owner of the deli would try to put that food truck right in front of the, right in those two parking, parking, it's in front of the bar.
And we'll find out who owns that vacant lot across from scratch.
Uh, it's owned by Mango. Which one? The one next to Mango says parking for Mango only.
Church. I think the church owns the one that you're talking about. Do West is. And I'm just thinking, you know, Santa Fe's just got them on both sides. It's just the first example that popped in my head, but there's a lot of opportunities like that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, anybody? All right. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.